Okay, good to go.
All right. Hello, everyone. Being six thirty on Wednesday, January seventeenth, and having quorum of the planning board. I'll go to item one, I'll call the planning, the, the planning board to order. Item two, we have some public hearings this evening. I will read the, the governor's remote open meeting law provisions. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law pursuant to the government's approval of a supplemental budget bill. Temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of public bodies physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The language of the extension does not make any subsequent changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty first, twenty twenty three to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely. And we shall address the questions of the chair or the host. The host this evening is Mr. Rully. Additionally, we would, we would make note of the following. All votes will be taken as roll call votes. The following Bridgewater members of the planning board are participating, participating remotely this evening. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the chair, Mr. Raymond Gemian, Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair, Mr. Stephen Geller, and Ms. Astrid Rojas. We did have-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Haley joined the meeting too.
So we do have an alternate member, Mr. Edward Haley to join us. During the meeting, again, all votes will be roll call. The following Bridgewater town staff will be participating with us remotely this evening as well. Mr. Robert Rully, Community Economic Development Director. Ms. Tristy Jane, the Assistant Town Planning. Mr. Greg Tansey, the Town Engineer, and Mr. Stephen Solaris, Building Commissioner. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. Board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask to use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name, an address, and your question. The chair or the host will recognize questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature on the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the chair or host recognizes you. Again, if it is a public hearing, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can also dial star nine to raise your hand. So we do have a, a number of continued public hearings this evening. The, the first item listed on the agenda is a zoning amendment. It should actually be on the public meeting. It's, the public hearing was closed at our last meeting. So it asked to take a motion to take that out of order and put that after item six, the A and R plan, if we could do that. Do a motion to take the zoning amendment and to place that later on under public meet, under a public meeting after the A and R plan.
So moved.
Hi, Mr. Gemian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Hi, Mr. Geller. Any discussion? So I'll take the role. Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Let me ask. Okay, so we do have a number of our requests to continue this evening. So I think what we should do is try to take all those out of order so we don't keep the public here for something that isn't going to happen this evening. So the first continued public hearing we have is zero Auburn Street. This is map seventy-nine lot one, portions of lot two, four, and eighteen. This is a four-lot subdivision. It's a definitive subdivision pursuant to the planning board subdivision rules and regulations. This was originally presented to us and continued from December sixth. We do have Ms. Jane, we do have a letter from the applicant asking for a two-week extension. Is that correct?
We got an email from them, from Mr. Gallagher this morning requesting the extension.
And did they give us a certain date or our first meeting?
The next meeting.
What is the first meeting in February?
Seventh, seventh of February.
Seventh. Ms. Jane, February seventh?
Seventh.
Okay, so do we have a motion to? We have, we do have a request from the applicant at zero Auburn Street, map seventy-nine, map, map seventy-nine lot one, portions of two, four, and eighteen to continue to the seventh, the seventh of February. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Hi, Mr. McDonald. Is there a second?
I can second.
Hi, Ms. Rojas. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll take the role. Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Let me ask. Okay, the next item we have, I don't know if anybody is here, but we do have a continuation of four, five, six Bedford Street. This is map sixty-two, lot thirty-four and eight. Excuse me, map sixty-two lots thirty-four and lot eight. This is a proposed expansion of parking count pursuant to section ten point six site plan approval. This has been continued since December twentieth. Is there anybody here for the applicant on four, five, six Bedford Street? Okay, I know there's some ongoing violations there that we're working with the town on. So what's the the board's opinion on this? Do we just want to kick this out again to February seventh if the applicant hasn't showed up the last two meetings? How do we want to proceed?
Any input, Mr. Rully, on the violations down there, what you'd recommend in this case?
We had, Mr. Driscoll and I spoke earlier. We had issued a violation to the property owner months ago. I met with the representative of the property owner. They suggested they were going to do some cleanup. That hasn't happened. We'll be issuing another violation. So I can't offer more than that at this point. I mean, the property owner is not the business that's got the trash to the side of the building. That's another tenant.
All right, maybe, maybe we can have Ms. Jane reach out to the applicant to see if they want to proceed, and maybe we should just continue this to February seventh at this point. They have not shown up at the, at the last meeting or this meeting, so they may, they may be abandoning the project, but why don't we give them the benefit, and maybe Ms. Jane can reach out to them over the next two weeks?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And then if next meeting, there's no difference, we deny it without prejudice. So it doesn't keep popping up.
Okay, so do we have a motion to continue four, five, six Bedford Street to February seventh?
So moved.
By Mr. McDonald, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Geller. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Let me ask. Okay, so we do have a new public hearing.
Hello?
Driscoll.
So sir, we just, we just continued you to February seventh. Sir?
Yes.
So we, we'll have Ms. Jane, or Mr. Rully, reach out to you from the planning office in regards to the outstanding issues and to see how you want to proceed.
It's been- We have, we have completely-
Well, we just, we just, we just, we just took a motion to continue it to February seventh, so some public may have dropped off, so it's continued to February seventh. Okay?
Didn't get the question. One more time, please.
The, the hearing has been continued to February seventh, and we ask town staff to reach out to you between now and then.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
We do have item three. This is a new public hearing. This is one, one, eight, five Pleasant Street, map seventy-two lot one. This is a site tent, site planning view. The applicant is the town of Bridgewater. This is for the proposed new fire station headquarters with requested waivers.
This is continued.
So I will, yeah, at the next meeting, I can read the, the public hearing notice and make sure we have the abutis notifications or whatnot. Because they did submit a continuation request for February seventh as well, correct, Ms. Rully?
That's correct.
Ms. Rully and Ms. Jane?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so Bob, do they want to just go to the, the meeting on the seventh?
Yes.
All right, so do we-
There was an issue with the legal advertisement for the Conservation Commission, which was supposed to happen previous to this meeting, so they need to go to Conservation first before they can come before you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to continue eleven eighty-five Pleasant Street, map seventy-two lot one, to the February seventh meeting, and this is for the Bridgewater Fire Department Headquarters?
So moved.
Hi, Mr. Gemian. Do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Geller. Any discussion? Normally, we'd open the meeting and make sure we have the green cards and then continue it, but I think if there's been advertising issues and stuff, we should wait for those to work out. We can read the the public hearing notice and make sure the green cards are received for next meeting. So, Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Let me ask. Okay. Item four. This is a, so this one is going forward, I believe. Item four is a preliminary subdivision plan. This is, we received before Mr. O'Brien took his leave, we received a link with a number of plans for this. We did receive a memo from town staff today. This is in regards to three fifty Cross Street. This is map one eighteen lots twenty-three and eighty-nine. It's a proposed new subdivision named Chestnut Mar Path. It's a four-lot subdivision with an existing home and additional parcel, it looks like. So if the applicant is here, we can turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Good evening. I'm Larry Silva from Silver Engineering Associates. Mr. Basam May, yes, he is on the line here also. So I don't know if you could bring that, can you bring that subdivision up on the screen or?
It's your office, Larry.
I'm sorry?
That's your office is doing-
Share, share screen. We don't, the staff doesn't put up your plan, so whoever's on your end, there you go.
Okay. All right, so Rebecca's here with me.
Yeah, I'm struggling. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's up, it's up, it's up.
Okay, so what you see before you is a proposed four, four-lot subdivision, which we have been designing to the criteria that are set forth in, in the regulations for, for smaller subdivisions. The, the issue that came about was that the existing house, which is at three fifty, which is shown here as lot twenty-three A, currently has a driveway that comes out the cross street. And as part of doing the subdivisions, you can see how it comes out. It comes out into just basically where this new roadway is going to meet the, the right-of-way for cross street. Cross street right-of-way is a, is a wide right-of-way in that area because previously the town had relocated the road itself a little bit and, and pulled it a little further to the north. But they never relinquished that, that section of the right-of-way, so it's still part of the cross, our cross-street layout. So we, we're trying to keep the, the driveway separate because this lot twenty-three A is, does have adequate frontage and meets all the require for, current requirements for it to be a, a separate Form A lot. We, we could take this out of the subdivision totally. And, but the issue was, we tried to move the driveway towards Snow's Brook Wetlands, wetlands that are around Snow's Brook. And we filed with Conservation Commission to try to deal with that issue. Conservation approved the relocation of the driveway, which is, we, about where she's showing the, the, the little hand in now. That's where we had the proposed driveway relocation. So it would not come into Chestnut Mar Path. And when we got through Conservation, the DEP appealed it. So the DEP appealed it, and they are not in favor of us relocating the driveway into the riparian zone of Snow's Brook. So they're not in favor of us doing that. There's only a couple of ways that they say that they could possibly justify it, and neither of those are really viable for for us to relocate that driveway. So what we're, the reason why we came forward with the preliminary to you folks as opposed to a definitive is that what we're looking to do is to actually bring that driveway so that it still comes into the initial portion of this proposed roadway, essentially down adjacent to the, within the cross-street layout. But basically, not, not in where cross-street currently is, is located. So as you can see it there, it would come in right at the, at, at the base of this subdivision. And, and doing so, the reason why we want to know that now is because we're, obviously, we've designed this to the standards of a one-to-four lot subdivision. And with this driveway entering in there, we just wanted to be sure that the planning board would be in line with us being able to do that. And I should point out to you that on the bigger picture, the effort to do this four-lot subdivision is in lieu of trying to do something much bigger in terms of a development with his property because he has a lot of land that's behind where this four lots are. Anything that would make us go to a greater standard would force us to have to do more lots to make it economically justified. And, and this way here, because there's a lot of roadway just to be constructed just to get to the first lot. And so having the lesser standard is what makes it economically viable. Other than that, we have to put in a, a large roadway, long roadway, and, and, and get up upwards of you know, ten-plus house lots in order to, to make it work, and we'd have to meet the full standards at that point. So what we're asking for is the board to weigh in on this would, would be a waiver request to have this driveway come into this four-lot subdivision from this, what would be a Form A lot. But we, we're saying that it's really the only place that we can really bring it in. And, and we're looking for your endorsement of that approach. And if so, then we will proceed with putting in the remaining detail into this subdivision and then bringing it back to you as a, as a definitive subdivision request.
Larry, can you, I, I, I looked at it. Can you show the comparison of the conventional versus the four lot?
You want to see the fif, the fifteen lot one?
Yeah, I, I looked at it, just so the public can see it and-
Of course.
Maybe, maybe board members that didn't realize there's a link to it can see it.
Of course, one moment. How's that?
Yeah, so this is, so if in order to, if we can't do to a lesser road, then we have to build out to, you know, full subdivision road requirements. And so what happens is you end up having to do a lot more in order to be able to offset the, the cost, the infrastructure cost and so forth. And that, this is a depiction of what, what we see as the, as the potential. Should we have to go in that direction? But my client, and he's online, and he can weigh in on what he is okay with and what he's not, but the four-lot subdivision is really what he'd like to be able to do. And, and then have, just have his house be adjacent to it on the form, what is basically the Form A lot.
So when we consider waivers, right, we have to consider what's in the public good. So look, look, looking, looking at this here, right? If if the, if the applicant did the four-lot subdivision, would they be open to putting a conservation restriction on all the remaining land shown on this fifteen, fifteen lot subdivision so that we can ensure the abutis on the Atkinson Drive area and surrounding neighborhoods that there'll be no further development? If we can, if we grant that waiver?
I, I don't, Mr. Basar is on the line with us here. I, I don't know, as you're posing that as a question, or are you posing that-
Well, then if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're asking for relief, saying, hey, we could do this, but this is all we want to do. I just don't want to see, you know, you, you do have that access off Atkinson Drive and, and things of that nature. I just don't want to see future development back there if, if the intent is to only have those four additional houses. I think that, you know, that a conservation restriction through the state on the, the remaining lands would be, would be a nice thing to have if we grant, if we consider granting a waiver for the additional-
I'm going to switch to the lotting plan. Because-
Right, but that, you're going to see parcel A is still there, but then that parcel back disappeared.
Uh, right, because at this point in time, these two are weren't, weren't considered when we initially did it for the fifteen lots. These two lots were considered, right? So you're considering-
Well, right, well, right, well, if you, if you look, if you look at the, the fifteen lot conceptual, the road goes right through lot three, so it does, it does include those, so I'm, I'm thinking of it almost like an open space neighborhood, right? So if we're willing to grant waivers, are they willing to grant development restrictions or conservation restrictions on the remaining lands?
Well, I, I guess what I'd say to you is, is that whatever the board would consider to be the way that we could approach this is all that we'd like to get is the consensus, consensus from the board and a vote from the board that basically says, we would do this under the condition that you did not do any further subdivision of the remaining land. Then, you know what I'm saying, whatever that condition is going to be, at least I know where we stand in terms of going back and, and and if that's the, and if that's acceptable to Mr. Basa, then that's what we will do.
Other board members have questions or comments?
I think your logic is perfectly sound. It makes sense. I mean, to be honest, I don't hate either proposal anyways, so but if, yeah, if they want the relief, then, you know, what you're saying just makes complete sense.
I agree, terminal, which is your, your point. I'm still confused, though, about how the driveway comes to the road. I wasn't clear. Is it actually part of the road? Is it coming adjacent to it? Is it so many feet away?
I'm going to zoom right in for you, okay?
Yeah, if, if she can zoom in there, you can see, right, that you, you see, when it comes down, it actually enters into cross-street.
Right now, it does-
Enters into the proposed roadway within what is now the layout of cross-street.
So you're saying the driveway actually enters the new subdivision road before it hits cross-street?
No, while, while it's in the cross-street layout. Not the physical cross-street pavement.
How far away will it be from the pavement?
It's about a, I'd say about a hundred feet, less than a hundred feet.
Yeah, less than a hundred.
So the, just again, so the driveway will be approximately a hundred feet from the new road, correct?
From-
It, it'd be within, within the new road about a hundred feet back from the existing cross-street pavement.
Oh, okay, so, so it is going to enter the roadway to the new subdivision before it hits cross-street?
Correct.
Yeah, but that whole section of the new roadway, there's a good section of it that's within cross-street because of that kind of expanded right-of-way that's there. I mean, to bring it down separate from, you can see that yellow line. That's the, the line of the, the riverfront. Okay, so having this come inside of it or try to get away from this road to bring it independently adjacent to here is what we were trying to do, and that's when we ran into the snag with DEP.
Not sure what that, what difference, how that's different from simply putting the driveway into the new roadway, the closest proximity to the road. Still entering the drive, it's still entering the new road.
Y, y, yes, but that lot is not a lot created by the subdivision per se. You know what I'm saying? It's a Form A sub. It just needs, it needs a place to have its driveway-
Semantics here. Okay, I understand what you're saying.
It's not for us to get another lot, you know what I'm saying?
Well, so Larry, how, how, how is that going to work? That, how many feet is that, that, that's being constructed on the current right-of-way?
Like we said, it's, it's about a hundred, just under a hundred.
I mean, does that need to be deeded to you from the town first so you can construct that on their property or?
No, every subdivision road goes across portions of the existing right-of-way. It's just that this one's a little bit more dramatic, only because it's a wide drive, right-of-way. So most, most of them go through ten to twenty feet of right-of-way.
Where would the maintenance requirement for the HOA?
It, it would still, it would, it would be on the new, it would, well, it, it, you'd have to vote, you'd have to vote it to be on the entire length all the way to the cross-street pavement. You'd have to make that as part of your decision. That that's, you know, that that becomes part of the maintenance part of it.
Any other board comments or feedback? Mr. Tansey, Mr. Rully, Ms. Jane, any feedback?
I don't have any at this point. Yeah, I don't think that this is a board decision, so I mean, I don't think it's appropriate for staff to weigh in on it at this-
Well, it, well, it is a request for a preliminary subdivision to actually have the board provide
A decision.
But, yeah, a, a decision so that we, we can come back with the, the detail that's needed.
But what, what waiver is actually being sought?
It's it, it, it's that, I guess, the Form A, the adjacent lot, which is a, not part of the subdivision, will still have its ability to, to join into this constructed roadway within the cross-street layout.
And I don't have it in front of me. What does our, what does our one-to-four lot subdivision say? Serve more than four lots? So, so is it, is it what you want access for a fifth lot off the subdivision? Is that the waiver?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
I guess that you, yeah, you could phrase it that way.
All right, so do we want, do we want to give Mr. Mr. Silva some direction here? I don't want to be the only one to- Are we okay with this? You know, based on the conversation we had, we'd like to see the remaining land put in a conservation restriction based on the fifteen lot subdivision and, and we're okay with the waiver, or do we want to go in a different direction? Or what's the world of what?
I think that's a fair compromise.
Yep, agreed. Same.
So, so would it be possible to have that in a, you know, in a motion that says that if the, if the remaining land were put into a, a conservation or, or basically a development restriction or-
Yeah, I mean, we get in trouble. We, we end up in court with those development restrictions. We should, you know, there's a state and Mr. Basa may want to look at it. If you just Google, you know, the state conservation restriction program that, that, it's right on there. I mean, I think we'd want it to follow that, that that process because everything else is tough to track and, and everything else, so I think you should look at that. But I think it should also be the land's area changes from your initial, your, your conventional to your full lot with a waiver, you know what I mean? So it should be based on the fifteen, the, the perimeter of the fifteen lot subdivision.
Yes.
So do we want to, I, we've, I don't think we've ever done a preliminary subdivision plan, so do we want to take a motion? Does somebody want to create a motion with some direction on this, and we can vote on it for the applicant, so they have some direction on this project, and then we can send out a, a letter based confirming that motion?
So your motion- So your motion would be to approve the preliminary subdivision with the condition. That all the remaining land would be entered into a conservation easement.
Correct.
In exchange for allowing the adjacent lot driveway to.
Yeah, we can add that in there, but I mean, I think that the, the trade of areas that to preserve that remaining open space.
Yeah.
And, and I think there's two good things here, right, and that's how we want to justify the waiver, you get, you get the driveway further away from the. Repairing zone, and then you have, you've created open space, so it, it, I think it's a good, good thing for the developer and for the town, you know? So do we have a motion to approve the preliminary plan with the condition that? All remaining land is going to be, you know, obviously it has to go through the definitive process, right? So, so do we have a motion to, um. Like, I guess approve it, approve a preliminary plan with the condition regarding the open space through the mass conservation program. And the other condition that it has to, uh, come before us and have a definitive subdivision approved, those two conditions, does that sound right?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right, you're just gonna.
As, as described by Mr. Drusil, I mean, I can reiterate it if you want.
Right, uh, you, we need a definitive, and it has to go through that process, and we want all remaining lands in a conservation restriction.
Yes, sir.
Do, do we have a second? And Mr. Gemma? Any discussion? I mean, the only discussion I'd have is, Mr. Silver, you're gonna follow all the other rules underground utilities, the drainage is going to be constructed per the. The, the four lot, one to four lot subdivision, all that, correct?
Yes, I mean, anything else that we would be requesting would be outside of this commitment. From, from the, from the board, and that would. That would have to be justified, and you, and you would have the right to say no to any, anything else that came up. That during the final design.
And this doesn't commit us to approving the definitive, doesn't meet that, the criteria.
No, it just says that if we come in with this configuration, with that commitment not to have the development of the remaining land, that. That's the only thing that you're committing to, and that because.
Yeah, we're not, so we're not talking about that driveway waiver anymore, it's basically been agreed upon.
That's exactly right.
All right, so do we have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Gemma?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Um, yes. Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Well, thank you very much, I know you don't see too many of these preliminaries, but we felt.
I think when there's issues, it's a good idea, so Mr. Silver, why we have you on? Um, why don't you stay right there, because we'll take item five, um, we have a bond release, a completion of a subdivision for Firefly Lane. Um, do we have a staff update for the board on this?
The status is not mine.
You have a form after, I'm sorry. Um, is there, is there any?
M- Mr. Chair, I would just defer to Mr. Tanzy whether or not he's. I, I know there was some question at least a week ago before, uh, Mr. O'Brien left on family leave, that there was still some work. That needed to be completed, I don't know if Mr. Tanzy has any more insight as to that.
And we don't have a bond calculation worksheet to look at either, correct?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Tanzy, do you want us just to continue this to the next meeting, so you can button it up, or do you have anything that you'd like to share this evening?
Yeah, I, I think we could continue it, I did, um. Prepare a, a, a bond calculation. Um, worksheet, but there was still a few items that remained, um. To be done, yeah, to install some, um, hoods on some catch basins and, um. Set some, um. Uh, iron pins for, for lot markers out there. Probably last week or the week before, he, um, submitted some. Material saying that he had completed the work, but I did not have the opportunity to go out there. And, um, verified the work had been finished and to, uh, recalculate my, um. Bond calculation sheet.
And I see we have Mr. Marney with us as well, Mr. Marney, would you like to speak?
No, I'm all set. I, I did, you know, put the trash hoods in and, uh, the engineer did stakeout. And put the rerod markers in. Um, and there was the water shut offs, I raised those up to grade, so that was it.
Okay, so just have that all re-inspected, Mr. Tanzy, put that on for the seventh as well?
Sure.
And we have a motion to continue the bond release completion of subdivision by a fly lane to, um, the February seventh, uh, meeting.
I, I have a question, am I allowed to vote on that, to continue it, or do I need to recuse myself from that as well?
If you want to be safe, you can recuse yourself, it's fine, we have, we can, we have Teddy, that's all. Do we have a motion in a second, any discussion?
So I actually, I actually don't think we got a second on that, I, I mean, I'll second it, but, uh, make sure we.
We didn't get a second, I'm sorry. All right, so we have a second, Mr. McDonald, did we get, did we get a motion? Who made the motion? So, so Mr. Jimmy made the motion, Mr. McDonald second, any discussion? I'll take the role, Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Gemma?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have item six, this is a B and L plan for ninety-one Colonial Post Drive. Mr. Silver's office, I believe, is re- representing the applicant.
Yes. Um, you gotta bring that one up, Rebecca.
Yes, I just gotta hit share screen again. Switch screens. That one. Ta-da.
Okay. Uh, these are two houses, uh, two house lots that are on Colonial Post Drive. Um, there was a, um. Discovered that there had been, uh, an issue of an encroachment from one to the other. And the resolution of it is the homeowners got together and agreed to make a change in the lot lines. In order to be able to rectify that problem. Uh, and so you can see there's a dotted line in there showing where the old lot line was. And came up, and then the narrow strip went down. Um, it, okay, so it came up from the street, then it turned, uh, and went across at a diagonal. And then came down parallel to the back line, uh, along the drain adjustment, uh, further down. And then just tied off, so in this particular case, what's happened here is, um, we just. Balanced it to make sure they both still had, uh, the required, uh, lot area. Uh, and, uh, we're asking for your endorsement so that they can, uh, take care of this and this encroachment issue.
So the frontage didn't change at all, that, that.
No, nothing, nothing changed in terms of the frontage, no.
That, that dividing line between one thirty-four A and seventeen A stayed the same, it's just when it takes that turn, that's where it changes.
It, it just extended it further back.
Yeah.
Okay, and then took the turn.
And they both need the upland requirements in the, in the lot area still, right?
Yes.
Any staff comments, Leana?
I have none.
Any board questions? Do we have a motion to endorse the A and R plan for ninety-one Colonial Post Drive, well, it's two, two addresses, right?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to endorse the A and R plan for a lot seventeen A and one thirty-four A? A motion by Mr. Gemma? Do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Geller? Any discussion? No discussion? Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gemma?
Yes.
Well, yes. Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Uh, if I, if I could, this is, I guess this is my last item on the agenda this evening. I, I would just like to, uh, to thank Mr. Jamie for his, for his service to the board. And, uh, I've had the pleasure of not only, uh, being in front of him on. Two stints that he's done on the board, but also was on the planning board with him in the early nineteen eighties. Uh, so I've known Ray a long time, yeah, he's done a lot for the town, and I wish him the best.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Good evening.
All right, back to item two, uh, we have the zoning amendment. Um, we closed the public hearing, this is to deliberate and discuss the zoning ordinance D F Y twenty-four dash zero zero four. Central Business District Form Based Code. This was continued from January tenth. So I guess the purpose of this. Discussion is to. Provide a recommendation to the council. Whether or not we support the Form Based Code, whether we do not support this Form Based Code zoning change. Or if we support it with amendments. So, um, I know at the last meeting. We, we all had some different questions and thoughts, and the, the discussion went on for quite a while. So what I'd like to try to do this evening is to. You know, have a discussion around it, you know, what, what are the initial thoughts, what are the issues we'd like to see corrected, if there are any? And, um, try to get a recommendation, um, to the town council. So I will open it up to the board, or to, if Mr. Rully wants to. Give some opening remarks, um, that, that's fine as well, so I just, I want to just try to get the discussion going around this, so we can. Come up with a recommendation.
Sure, if I could, Mr. Driscoll, just a few minutes, he says, which will be probably more than a few minutes, but. Um, certainly appreciate the, the time that. Uh, this board as well as the C E D committee has put into. Understanding the document and what the intent is, um. Moving forward, I mean, there are still some edits that we need to make, those are minor, um. It, uh, also recognize that there may be some, uh, things within the document that. This board can endorse, and that's fine, um, and that will be ultimately up to the town council decide. Uh, the C E D committee will be also looking at this one more time before it goes to. Uh, the town council on February sixth, um. I, I, I shared with you today a document that. Related to the town of Milton, and there was a lot of questions and, and discussion at the last meeting. You know, why is the town of Bridgewater doing this, and, you know, why wasn't the public involved? Um, I think that document that I shared today clears it up, it's state law. Um, subsequent to what I shared today, there is an attorney general letter that has gone out to the town of Milton, so. Rather than look at. The M B T A legislation as something that's untenable, we've tried to make that work to our advantage. And I respect those that don't feel it's important, um, but all in all, it is. Um, we are already seeing a lot more interest in redeveloping. Those underutilized properties in Bridgewater that we've identified and have identified since. The first workshop we did with the council, I think back in April, um. With anticipation that some form of this is going to be approved, which is a good thing, um, so. I think Mr. Driscoll and I have had several conversations about some of the tweaks that need to be made. Uh, I appreciate the amount of time that. He has put into working with me on this, as well as council member Robinson. Who's taken the time to learn more about what the rationale behind some of this is, um, that's all constructive, so, um. I agree with Mr. Driscoll's approach that would like to get through this with a general. Recommendation to the town council to adopt it, with the understanding that there'll be some further tweaks. And ultimately, it will be the town council's decision as to what they would like that final document to look like, so with that, I will. Yield my time, sir.
All right, so just open up to the board for discussion, because, you know, generally, I. I like a lot of things about it, there's some things that I still have concerns about, so. Just somebody from the board, Mr. Gemma, and Mr. McDonald's, Ms. Rojas, Mr. Geller, want to start with? Any of your concerns or, or issues, and maybe we can try to. Compile a list of those and, and send those off to the council.
Yeah, I'll just make, I'm somewhat repeating myself, but, um. First of all, I'm in favor of this, I, I think it's a step in the right direction, in fact, it's a very good step in the right direction. Um, at the same time, um, I understand we have a state mandate. But I don't believe the state is saying that every part of this has to be put into effect, that there is. Give and take in terms of the details. And my main concern, as I said last time, is still the size of the buildings. I would like to see no more than, uh, four stories in the document, and if it changes later, maybe. I think if this board were to adopt a six-story height on certain buildings, I suspect some of the. Residents of Bridgewater may want to pay tar and feathering back, uh, in terms of, uh, the boards, I, I just don't think it's, uh, a good idea. I cannot see a, a six-story building on, uh, on, on Spring Street at all. So that's my main point, I think, is I'm, I'm not trying to be negative, because I am in favor of this, and I do want to see it. To go to the council, and I do want to see the council, uh, approve it, I just think there should be some tweaks, and my main issue is the size of buildings, that's all. Thank you.
Other, um, board members at this point?
They'll spare us a repeat of last week, uh, I mean, you know where I stand on it, uh, if I was to tweak it, uh. I would agree with what Mr. Jimmy just said, uh, I don't really have any further comment at this time.
So just repeating the heightened mess, um, just to clarify, Mr. McDonald, heightened, heightened mess.
Yes, yes, sir.
Are you okay with four stories, or is that still not at, not, um, adequate? I'm just trying to come up with a list that we can agree on, for sure, if you vote against it, you vote against it, but you want to stay with the four stories as well?
It's certainly not my desired outcome, but, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, that's, that's what we can get, you know, it's, uh. Better than nothing.
Ms. Rojas? Mr. Geller?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think this is a, a great step in the right direction, uh. To be honest with you, I don't think six stories really scares me, um, I think when it's put into a. A decent context of a building, it probably actually look pretty nice. Um, but we should also remember that it, it states. Six stories for lots over a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, so. It, it, you're not gonna see, uh, a large story building sitting right on the, on the main, on the main road. And it says up to six stories, so, um. It doesn't mean that they're gonna do it, and if they, and if it would get done, it, you know, it possibly get denied, uh. But I'm not gonna let that, um. You know, change my mind on, on moving forward with this, so. And, and, and if we later on down the, the, the line, we want to tweak it to be less than six stories, I, I, so be it, um. But I'm not, I'm, I, I guess I'm probably one of the only ones that's probably okay with six stories, um. But it's, it, it depends on the whole design of the whole, whatever they're gonna build, so. Other than that, I think this is going in the, in the, in a positive direction. That's all.
Okay, any other board comment or concerns at this point?
No, I appreciate the letter that Mr. Rully provided, um, just list out all of the benefits. With, provided by the law, um. And I'm also on board, I read through the document, I think that, um. You know. I, I don't see the, the big difference between four floors and six floors, but if, if. What is, what is the advantage of? Of saying we're only gonna go with four floors, can, do we have the option of saying that right now, or?
Yeah, we can make any recommendations we want, it's just the council doesn't have to take them, they can, they can vote how they vote.
Okay. I would recommend four floors.
Okay, any other comments at this point? So, Mr. Rully, just, I know I went over a bunch of, um, scribbled stuff and s- stuff that is intended. Is intended to be right, but just needs to be w- worded, so I won't go over. You know, all that stuff again. Um, I know we talked about the map. One one just clarifying question on the map, that residential D sub district, just so it's on the record. Is that going to be held off on for right now? We're not going to move forward with that at this point?
Right, I mean, if we're able to move the. M V T A platform, which we anticipate we're going to be able to, then that line would, that area would then fall into. The, uh, C B D R, um, and would be then subject to. The requirements of the C B D R, um, right now, it we can't do that because it's. Haven't moved the platform yet, but, um. I certainly. You know, respect. Mr. Jamian's position and and yours with respect to the height and certainly will defer to the council, um. I'll have an opportunity to explain why I think it's advantageous to at least allow for that, but respect that. Coming out of this board, whatever your position is, I would just, if in fact your. Desire is to issue a positive recommendation, I would ask that. The other board members agree to let you and I work through. Some of the scribners errors and other details, um, so we don't get lost in the minutia tonight, um. Certainly, whatever that final doc and also recognizing that the C E D committee has another look at this as well. Um, we would have a final document out to everyone for review before the February sixth meeting. Uh, we have posted the thirteen-page checklist that is part of this zoning amendment and Form Based Code. Tomorrow I will post, uh, I know that Dr. Hunt had asked for some examples. Of other communities that have adopted a Form Based Code. We just got that list compiled today. I will post that to. The website tomorrow, so communities can look at that, um, I mean, so individuals can look at those communities, but. I'm appreciative of. The time that. In the comments that I've heard from the planning board, um. You know, this is not my document, this is the town's document, so, uh, moving this forward is is what is a priority for me, and. I think, you know, to your credit, Mr. Driscoll, you've been very good communicating with me, and we've had a lot of back and forth. As well as with Union Studios and Horsey Whitney, so I think we're all going to end up in a place that. The majority of us feel is something we can be proud of.
All right, good. All right, so I mean, that that was just so that I just want to make sure that was done, and then. I'm just, you know, other things, you know, I I I'm a I'm a smaller building guy. I like the four, I like the four stories and sixteen thousand square foot footprint. So I hope that we can put that into a letter if it's favorable and ask for that to be considered by the council. Um, again, whether they adopt that or not, it's up to them. Um, another thing I would like to see. Is a minimum lot size for C B D R. Uh, we we don't have that. I think that would that would go a long way, so I'd like to have that in the in the letter. Whether they adopt that or not, that's up to them. Um. Well, and I I again, a lot of these other comments that I had to Mr. Rully today were just more scribners and and clarification. Um, I think that. Early on, we talked about this technical review committee, and I think we did expand that, which is a good thing. Um, and I think that it is clear now that anything in the C B D S. Which is the existing central business districts around the the central square and then on the north side of the central business district are. Um, that will. Require site plan review and will only require a special permit in addition to that if there's demolition involved, so I think we're on the same page with that now. Um. Yeah, so the the changes to the traditional, you know, so it the the traditional frontage, um. So my four, my my four things really are. Um, the force, the four-story height and the sixteen thousand square foot footprint versus twenty-five thousand flex frontage and transitional. The minimum lot size in C B D are, um.
And then we had talked about allowing for the townhouses.
Yeah, and if there are townhouses, obviously that can't be achieved. You're not going to commercial the first floor of townhouse. Um, the site plan approval, just cl- uh, cleaning that up. I had one other thing.
What about affordable?
Well, that that was it. So, you know, and maybe, you know, I agree with Mr. Rully that developers don't want to do affordable, but I would like to stay ahead of the. Um. The forty B requirement in town, so it would be nice. I know, I know in one of the bonus categories in the C B D S, he did work in a ten percent. For the bonus units. Um. And I'm not saying it has to be for the smaller projects, maybe projects over a certain size, whether it be twenty or fifty, have to have ten percent affordable, just. So these larger projects don't put us, you know, far behind this affordable requirement, so. Um, you know, tho- those are really my my major points. I think the other things are, you know, scribness errors and. Map adjustments and things of that nature, which we've talked about. And hopefully can be incorporated before it goes to the council, so. Does anybody have anything else?
Do you want me to make a motion to approve?
Hold on, uh. Affordable.
Yeah, Mr. Driscoll, I would just, you know, caveat any approval is, you know, with the planning board. The other members. Trusting you to work with my staff, me and my staff to make sure that. Though whatever. You want to see in that letter is incorporated, and again, recognizing that ultimately it's the council's decision, but. To be fair, to make sure that we're capturing what the decision is of of the planning board.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, when when we work on the final document. Yeah, after, um, Mr. Chase and. Ms. Robinson and, um, Mr. McKinnon meet. There'll be a document that we can obviously circulate. It'll be available for the public and for the for the for the, um. For the planning board to see before it goes to that final hearing, so.
As well as the town council members.
So do we, do we have, um, you know, I I know I have a couple of things listed here. I just I screwed up my list. I have the. The four stories and the massing to be reduced, to be consistent with the. Uh, mixed-use frontage. I have the minimum lot size to be added to the C B D R. I said, uh, consider an affordable. Ten percent affordable requirement for projects of certain sizes. Is there anything else we'd like to have the, uh, town council consider changing?
I think the townhouse language, Mr. Driscoll.
Well, that would be.
That that's not a change. It's just us cleaning up the way the document reads.
And the intent there is that if somebody wants to mix townhouses into a mixed-use development in the C B D. Are in the mixed-use zone. Obviously, those townhouses wouldn't have commercial the first floor. You couldn't do it, correct?
That's correct, and they would not be on the street. They would be.
Behind. And there'd have to be some component of commercial on the site as well, correct?
That's absolutely correct, yes.
Okay. I mean, tho- those are my main, my main issues that I'd like to see in a letter to the council if we vote to, um. Approve this. It's just, I I really don't like the building size, and I think we just need to clean up a few other things and add affordable, so.
Sorry, just a question on that last point with the townhouses. When we say some commercial on the site, do we have a definition for that, or is it kind of just free floating?
No, so there might be a situation, Mr. McDonald, that on a particular parcel. You could have a building on the the s- the sidewalk edge that is mixed-use that had commercial. On the ground floor, and it might have residential above, but if there was additional land behind that building and separate from that building. There was the ability to build. Townhouse units purely residential, that would be allowed.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, is there any more feedback from, um? The board on this? All members, associate or or alternate members, anyone?
Yeah, I haven't put it. I've really been listening and haven't said much. Um. But I I really like what I'm what I'm hearing from the board, uh, it's, uh. Something that I've been looking forward to, something like this for quite a long time, uh. One of the reasons why I stayed around here is to see where this town can go, right? Um, and this is definitely a positive step, and I think we'll, uh. Uh, I like that we're getting together as a team here. Good voice. It's not a lot of back and forth at this stage. I was kind of fearful that we might get a little bit more back and forth on this, some of these things. So, uh, I'm just happy to see it a- at this juncture, looking forward to the end of the this, uh, portion of the meeting when we get that vote going.
Okay. All right, does somebody want to make a motion or more discussion? If you want to continue discussion. Continue discussion, if you want to make a motion, make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, um. Forward, um, our approval with the points that you listed, Mr. Driscoll, to the council. And the, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Rully about cleaning up, uh, some of the language.
We're going to make a motion to recommend, right?
Right, to recommend.
And then what I had written down from this meeting was, um.
That's me the four points, yeah.
Right, have the flex and the traditional frontage footnotes of match instead of six stories, twenty, twenty-five thousand square feet. One would match, uh, four stories, um. Sixteen thousand square feet, and the other one would be four stories. It was only eight thousand square feet, so that can stay, and. The minimum lot size needs to be added to C B D R. And an affordable component of some, um, of ten percent for projects over a certain size, and, you know, we can leave that to the. Council and Mr. Rully to discuss if they want to discuss it, but. Small projects, maybe we don't need it, but larger projects would be nice to offset, um. You know, the affordable requirement in town. I think what the Perkins developers did with having ten percent there was was a great thing, and. I know the town worked out to to get that to happen, so I'd like like to see that happen on all big projects. So do we have a motion to, um?
You have a motion, you need to.
We have, we we have a motion to recommend. I read those things that we'd like to discuss. Or 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 have, um, included in the decision letter for, or. Things that we'd like to see the council change. Is there anything else we'd like to add, any other discussion?
You have a second. I don't think you have a second yet.
Do we have a second? I'm sorry, I'm off tonight, so. Ms. Rojas, you're a second?
Yes.
And and to be clear, it's not a decision, it's a referral letter.
Right. Um. Then I'll work with Mr. Rully on, um, if I can. Craft those conditions, and he can write the rest of the letter of of Ms. Jane, and we can work on getting that over to, um, the council. And then, um. Just a lot of the scribner stuff, the site plan stuff, the the stuff that just needs to clean up, uh, if the board's okay with it, I can work with Mr. Rully on it, and obviously the board will get. A copy before it goes to, um, the the hearing like everybody else would anyway, so. So do we have a motion in a second to recommend with some changes we'd like to see? Any other discussion?
I'll just note that, I mean, while I'm still not in favor of the proposal. Can't a good conscience recommended? I am in favor of the, uh, amendments discussed. I think those are good changes, and, uh. You know, I I hope, uh. I I have complete faith that, uh, Mr. Rully and all our other staff will, uh, will do a good job, uh. Managing this, you know, through the rest of the process.
Yeah, and and Mr. McDonald, you know, I. If you look at what we currently have in the C B D. Uh, I believe the height for the mixed use is four stories now already, and then we're we're adding a bunch of design standards, so I don't. I mean, I know it it can look scary and sound scary to to somebody that doesn't, you know, you know, to. Somebody who's been here a long time and wants it to look a certain way, like like I do and I think you do, um. I think it'll just improve upon what we have for language now, so. But I I agree with that. I don't want to see six-story buildings either. I think that's why that's that's going to be in a in our letter, so. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I'll take the roll. Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Gala?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
And I'm E S. So we'll we'll draft a letter to recommend, uh, four to one from the planning board with, um, recommended changes, so. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rully and Ms. Jane, for that.
Thank you, everyone.
The next on the agenda, we have board business, um. Town staff, um, is going to provide us with an update on nine hundred Elm Street under item seven.
So, uh, this was brought to our attention a couple of different ways, um. There's a number of, this is the Lucchini Bus Company parcel on nine hundred Elm Street, uh. There is a number of violations, um, both that affect the planning board, but also the Conservation Commission. Uh, probably the most egregious is it appears that some wetlands have been filled in. Um, so we will be issuing a cease and desist order, uh, with respect to any further activity from there. At that site from the Conservation Commission, I'm also obligated to put D E P on notice that this happened because. The violations from them are much more severe than anything the town could, um, enact. There are also site plan violations. I mean, they should have been before this board with respect to. Uh, some of the work they were doing for site plan approval, and then I know that, you know, Mr. Solari and his staff. Have some issues with some other construction that has happened, so, um. I've discussed this with the town manager, uh, we have a path forward, but. Just to advise the planning board that. We'll probably be dealing with this for a few meetings going forward, as will the Conservation Commission.
Any board questions for Mr. Roy?
Yeah, just, uh, well, just out of curiosity, how would the planning board have, how would this affect the planning board?
They made, uh, they would have not needed to get some site plan approval for some of the work that they did. They've. Cleared a lot of the site. They're expanding, I it would appear for parking, um. So certainly, you know, that should have been before you for a a minimum of site plan and review.
Drainage, all that stuff, too. Okay, so that's that's on the town's radar. We'll get updates, and hopefully it comes to us for site plan approval, or it it gets removed based on. Concom, correct?
Correct, a- and the state, I mean, and I think the state has the biggest stick in this right now.
How extensive was the wetland filling, Mr. Ruby?
Pretty significant. Any wetland fill-in i- i- is not legal, but.
Yeah.
So this is noticeable to the naked eye.
Drive drive twenty-four north at about five thirty in the morning. It's a huge parking lot. That we didn't approve, all filled in back there. It's enormous. I I didn't notice it until all the leaves fell, hey? I saw it a couple of weeks ago, and I couldn't believe it.
Oh, boy.
All right, um, any other discussion with the ruley on nine hundred Elm Street? We'll just keep, we'll keep that on as other business to get it rolling.
Yep.
Update on that. Um, just, we have minutes for December sixth, December twentieth.
Can I ask that you continue that to the February meeting, please?
Call the nose. Um. I know, Ms. Jane, we pushed a lot of stuff to the next, the next meeting, um. December, uh, February seventh, if you want to give us an update on what's on that, I know you might not have that in front of you, but if you if you do, you can give us an update. If not, we can. Move on.
We we have one other, uh, application that will be coming forward that we just received. Uh, yesterday on Plymouth Street, I haven't. As you know, with Mr. O'Brien out, I mean, we're kind of trying to. Find our footing and we're a lot of different hats, but we'll have at least one additional new item, uh, for a public hearing coming up.
So, uh, Euro Urban Street, uh, on seventh Feb, four fifty-six Bedford Street. One one eight five Pleasant Street. Pond release. Uh, five, uh, five fly lane. And, yeah, that's all for seventh, and the new, uh, which Bob, uh, just told us.
Mr. Really, is that more of a site plan or is that a subdivision or what is that?
If you. Give me a minute, I can. Let you know.
Michael, it's nineteen minutes. We're going to make it.
I can go slower.
I had I had a feeling we'd be okay.
Just bear with me, please.
I have a sinus infection. My head's ready to explode, so it's probably, that's why I'm trying to go so fast. I have a sinus infection. My head's ready to explode, so it's probably that's why I'm trying to go so fast and I apologize.
I've been sick the last two weeks. There's some kind of respiratory thing going around hard.
Uh, it's zero Plymouth Street, the intersection of Plymouth and Mill uh.
Oh, we approved the restaurant there before.
So I think this might be preliminary. Um. I haven't been able to pull it up on permitting, but. Looks like it's got a little confusion because it's within a business B and an industrial A. And there's also a uh. Electromobility that runs through the site.
Okay. Um. So under board committee and liaison reports, I wanna echo what Mister Silver said. I'm gonna miss Ray. He's done a great job for the board. Um, he wants to leave, but he doesn't wanna leave. So he wants to continue to represent the planning board. Why don't you explain what you'd like to do, Mister Jimmy?
Oh, well, okay, the first of all. I do appreciate working with all of you. I really do. I mean, I've you're all good people. And I've never really uh. I get upset with people, not you guys. I mean, you've been very good and and you're dedicated. And I um new people that come on, I hope you do well. And it's important that you look at the. All the regs and zoning and everything. It's important you get to know that. Um, the main thing I need from you is a motion. A vote to put me as your representative to the tree committee. Um, I. Talked this over with uh Mister Dutton, and he said that uh it does not have to be a member of the board. But I would like to uh continue on the tree committee. We're moving along, getting some things done. I just wanna stay on that committee, so. I really need you to um vote tonight uh to make me your representative, which obviously I'll report to you. Um, of the of the planning board representative of the tree committee. That's it.
Is there anyone that wants to challenge Mister Jimmy into that seat?
There'll be a competency hearing if there is.
Uh, do we have a motion? To appoint now resident, no longer planning board member, Mister Jimmy, in as the planning board member to the tree committee?
So moved.
By Mister McDonald?
Second. Second.
By second by Miss Ross? Okay, so I'll take the role. Um, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Were you hesitating?
I was thinking about it.
Mister McDonald?
Now, if we vote no, does he have to stay? Yes.
Mister Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm E S.
Thank you, folks.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ray. So you top you top. You run great meetings. You're a great chairman when you did it. Somehow you convinced me to do it. I still like you.
Yeah, well. You need you need support. You guys have to support Pat.
Yeah, all right.
I learned a lot watching Ray over the years that uh it's been it's been a great time serving alongside him.
All right, anything else? Any planners report, Miss Jane and Mister Rully? Have you covered that already?
Yeah, I just I just, you know, again, I wanna reiterate and I don't, you know, I talk too much, but um. The planning board taking the action that you've took tonight and um. Hopefully, the council is going to approve this zoning amendment with whatever modifications and amendments. That they feel are appropriate is pretty monumental uh in terms of. Forward progress for the town of Bridgewater um. It's one of the reasons I took the job was because I saw an opportunity. These. Types of amendments and changes are not easy because. They're just not. Change is is hard for people. You know, the the let's talk white papers. That I write tomorrow's is coming out and it's about change. Um. But you know, change happens whether we do something or we don't do something, but you know, this was, you know, done with the idea of how do we. Maintain the historic character of Central Square, take advantage of the MBTA legislation and all the funding associated with that. And do some new development and expand the tax base where we can address some housing issues and infrastructure issues. And do that in a thoughtful way, and if you read these communities that are fighting back, they're not doing any of this, so. I mean, this is a credit to this board and the town council and the manager's office for allowing me to. Kind of take this initiative and run with it, so I just wanna say thank you for on behalf of myself and my staff, but. I think this is something. That you may not all universally be proud of tonight, but I think in the future you will be and um. Thank you.
You know, Bob, um. I I, as I said before, I think this is a good idea. The the main thing in my mind is that this is not being, i- if we didn't do this way, we would have done things piecemeal. And piecemeal doesn't work out. This is an overall plan, and that's the important way. Now, how it's gonna work out, we don't know, but at least it's a step in the right direction. So I commend you on that. And by the way, you keep saying it's not your plan. It's town. It's your plan.
I'm gonna disagree.
You know, and I I know I've been nitpicky with some of the stuff and. Just making sure things are clear, but I think it makes it a lot easier for developers when it's clear. And I think it's a lot easier for us and Mister Solari's office when we know where commercial is expected, where commercial isn't expected. Where site plan is required, where site plan isn't required. I mean. The tighter that is in the document. It I think it makes it a lot easier for everybody, engineers, developers and everything else, so. I apologize. I can be a pain in the neck, but I I'll continue to fight for those things to be, you know. Clean and clear in the document and and hopefully we we get it done, so. Thank you, Mister Really.
Now, if we were meeting in person, we'd be hugging each other right now, right?
All right. I wouldn't. I have a cold, so um. We have adjournment. Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mister Jimmy has lost the German.
And I'll just say that I've only had a year and a week to work with Mister Jamie, but I've appreciated it.
It's been good, Bob.
Ray's not going anywhere. All right, we have a motion by Mister Jimin. Do a second.
If we don't second it, does he have to stay on?
Who who's that? Who who Mister Gallo seconded, correct? All right, and then just for discussion, though, again, Ray, thank you very much. I mean, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Ray.
You know, we're gonna have an opening of the planning board. Think you could fill in for like three months?
All right, guys. So now I'll take the role, Mister Jimmy?
Yes.
Miss Rojas?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm E S, and we have ten minutes to spend, Mister McDonald, so.
Excellent. I'm a I'm a yes to Pat.
Did I skip you? I'm sorry. Mister Geller?
Cole's getting to him tonight, yeah.
I I'm going to CVS to pick up my my drugs, my antibiotics. All right, thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
All right.
Good night, everyone.